Good afternoon, we'll call this meeting to order. We'll have roll call. One thing before we do roll call, we have a new system tonight. So if you want to speak, you will hit this button, it will queue you up. And then, we will cut you on from here. And it is new, so just bear with us.
That is about voting, yes.
Voting. We will do what we normally do. We will ask for a motion and a second, any discussion, and then we will say, "We'll now vote." Matt will have to queue that up, so if you will just give him a second, please, to do that. So if we will have roll call now, and he's already got it queued up. All right. Is that everybody? All right. So after this, you'll have to hit close after the vote. All right, now we'll have invocation by Commissioner Perkins-Williams. You'll please stand.
Dear Lord, bless this meeting, bless the residents who show up during, bless the board deciding for those issues that they have, have our support as we continue to drive the general service.
Now if you'll please welcome the students from J.R.A.T.C. at South Central High School for the pledge.
Good evening, my name is Kaya Walker, and I am a senior at South Central High School, and currently the Cadet Command Sergeant Major in a J.R.A.T.C. program.
Good evening, I'm Liliana Gales, a junior at South Central High School, and I'm currently Battalion Officer in the J.R.A.T.C. organization.
Thank you for having us this evening.
At this time, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may all be seated.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. We have approval of the agenda?
Yes, Chairman. My request is to speak with Commissioner Ford and Commissioner Nunley.
Now, I think Commissioner Nunley will be here. Yes, sir. All right. Do you have a second? You got a second? All right, all in favor, if you'll please vote. Well, you can vote. I don't do that anymore. There we go. All right, I'll get close. All right, now do we have approval of the agenda? Got a motion and a second. If you'll please vote. All right, and now we'll move on to public addresses to the board.
Mr. Chairman, you have two people signed up to speak. If the attorney will read the statement.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Okay, the first person signed up is Carlos Alfonso.
Hi Commissioners, I'm Carlos Alfonso. I live in 1931 Tar Court, here in Greenville. I represent down home North Carolina, and I'm sure you remember me from a few months ago, when me and my members came up to propose our idea of finding grant dollars to support double bucks. As you might have already heard, the grant doesn't really exist anymore, which is, you know, to be honest, pretty depressing. I'm not really here today to talk about double bucks, per se. I'm sure we've seen the trend of a variety of grants and dollars that could have been used for local initiatives, like what we were proposing, just being cut by Congress and the presidency as a whole. These are really frustrating, because we're talking about hundreds of thousands and not millions of dollars that could have come here to Pitt County, and we're never going to see those dollars come back. Back in April fifteenth, the National Assembly of County Commissioners sent a letter to Congress saying that y'all opposed the cuts to Medicaid. And I'm very thankful that y'all sent that letter. These cuts are going to affect millions of North Carolinians, and I don't even know how many folks in this county specifically. And I appreciate that letter being sent, but me and my members want y'all to do a bit more for us. There's other cuts coming in, for SNAP and EBT benefits, cuts coming in that can affect our elderly population, cuts that affect the ability for people to buy homes, and just do a variety of other things. Again, these are millions of dollars that y'all could even use in the budget this year, instead of being as conservative as you've needed to be. And I know your hands are tied, there's not much you can do for the dollars themselves, but you are representatives, and I'm asking you, on behalf of my chapter, to represent us, to make a statement on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kat Nell.
Hi, I'm Kat Nell. My address is 601 Rockland, and I was invited here from Commissioner McLavon Melvin. Happy birthday. But I work for Hope a Glory Ministries. I am the Executive Director at Hope a Glory, and if you are not familiar with us, we are a faith-based nonprofit. We are right here on Evans and Arlington. We have a thrift store, so we're open to the public. But we have an empowerment program that helps families get to financial stability. We believe in a hand up, instead of a hand out, and we believe that families, to come alongside families, to help them pay off debt or put money into savings. The way, we do not actually pay the debt for them. We have an empowerment program. We have a mini grocery store on our site. Our families pay a fee every month, they attend finance classes, they have a financial mentor, and the way that they're able to pay off debt is they, we have a grocery store. They grocery shop with us, instead of going to the grocery store that you're familiar with, and then we use that, they use that savings to put towards a debt, or a savings. So with us, we are grant-funded just for food, from nonprofits, but for me, when I met with Melvin, it was more of, we were talking about, how can we, as Pitt County? Because I firmly believe that it doesn't take just one nonprofit. We could, I wish I could work myself out of a job. I don't see myself working myself out of a job anytime soon, but how can we, as a county, come together to not only transform Pitt County, that's where I want to start, but like, transform the U.S. and who we are? So for us tonight, when I was meeting with Melvin, is more just a call to you guys of, hey, how can we engage in nonprofits? How can we come alongside of them? How can we get to know what actually nonprofits do? And how can we benefit them? Whether that's Melvin coming to see exactly what we do, or you guys seeing different nonprofits, because I firmly believe that it's going to take more than one to transform Pitt County, but how can we collectively do that? So I'm not asking for money tonight, I'm asking for, for who we are to be, to be shared, to who we are, to who the nonprofits are. They do phenomenal work in Pitt County, but I think they go unseen at times, and not, they go unseen, because there's so many things that so many of us do, that it can be confusing. So how can we come together collectively to understand what we do, but then we can also disperse that into the families that we need to serve in Pitt County? So thank you, Melvin, for having me here, and thank you guys for all that you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all that we have signed up.
All right, we'll go down for presentations.
Our first presentation this evening is for Employee of the Month, Sonya Evans. You'll come forward, and we're going to make a list of her. Sonya Evans, goodness, she must be running late. Okay, well, we will hold that one for now. Sonya Evans, with family and children Medicaid in the Department of Social Services, was this month's Employee of the Month, and if she should come in before we finish presentations, we'll do her in the last order. We have two other proclamations to read. The first one is a proclamation recognizing Delta Day, and if those Deltas in the audience would please come forward. Proclamations are within the authority of the Chair, and when requested, they're reviewed by staff and the Chairman, and it is my pleasure to present to this group a proclamation recognizing Delta Day. This first came to our attention at the request of Senator Candy Smith, and she invited her fellow Deltas to come, so that folks could learn more about this organization. And the proclamation reads, whereas Greenville, North Carolina Alumni Chapter and the Pitt County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated are both strong and active community service organizations, and whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has 350,000 members, over 1,000 traffickers across the world, and the membership of the Greenville, North Carolina Alumni and Pitt County Alumni is over 125 members. And whereas, the two alumni chapters are committed to community service, social action, and philanthropy, and for over eighty-five years, have had a history of service to the region. Whereas, the two alumni chapters and the sorority as a whole are centered around a five-point thrust, focused on economic development, educational development, international awareness, physical and mental health, and political awareness. And whereas, the Greenville chapters and Pitt County chapters are known for their focus on civic awareness, they understand that in order to make change and advocate for communities, it is crucial to have a seat at the table, and it is important to stay informed and engaged in order to make their voices heard and our communities represented. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, through the authority of the Chairman, does hereby recognize May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five as Delta Day, and encourage its continued service to our community, adopted this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five, signed by Benji Holloman, Chairman, and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board. And for the benefit of everyone to know, while this is the first time I recall doing this, they were before the Greenville City Council with a very similar proclamation two weeks ago, and will continue their tour, so that the municipalities and other entities within Pitt County Government learn about their incredible work. And I will present that to Ms. Glenda. Thank you. And we'll give them a round of applause. We can sweep in for a picture. Do you need two rows? Okay, we can have.
I don't know where I am today. We're all short.
Thank you. And I believe you need two copies, do you? And it's for a second. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, and we have a second proclamation this evening, recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Week Care for Everyone. If the EMS crew would please come forward. Welcome in here, this is our esteemed crew. And Jim McArthur, if you will introduce yourself and those who are here.
Good afternoon Commissioners, everybody, all right, so I'm Jim McArthur, Deputy Director of Emergency Services, EMS Coordinator, and these are several of our fine paramedics that work for Pitt County, work for all of you, serve for everyone. LeAnn Stocks, Supervisor April Belski, Paramedic David Briggs, and Paramedic Zach Taylor. I'm really proud of these folks, love them and their team, the rest of them, they make it all good.
Excellent, and it's my pleasure to read a proclamation recognizing Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Week Care for Everyone, May eighteenth to twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And it reads, whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service to citizens of Pitt County, and whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas, emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the twenty twenty-five EMS Week theme, EMS Week Care for Everyone, recognizes the value and accomplishment of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, the Pitt County Board of County Commissioners, through the authority of the Chairman, does hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as Emergency Medical Services Week throughout this county, and we urge all people of Pitt County to recognize and support the many activities and efforts of emergency medical service providers, adopted this nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five, signed by Benji Holloman, Chairman, and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board. I'll present that to you. A round of applause. Sweep in for a picture. Thank you so much, appreciate all that you do. Sonya Evans, join us, wait. I don't see Sonya. It's okay, we will provide this speaker. You're here.
All right. Mr. Jonas Hill, you're up. Thank you for being up there early, I like that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, fellow Commissioners and Madam Manager. Tonight, the first item I have for you is a rezoning request from CND Landfield. The request is to rezone one hundred and twenty-two point seven-one acres of their property, being parcel number zero eight six three three, which is located on the southern side of US two sixty-four east, from rural agricultural to light industrial. Just to orient you guys a little bit on map here, the site is located just to the south of the intersection of NC thirty and two sixty-four east, and just north of the Tar River, in the Paxtollis area. The existing land use map is shown here on the screen, and you can see there is some residential areas along US, excuse me, US two sixty-four, as well as some commercial activity at the intersection of NC thirty, and scattered throughout as you head east towards Beaufort County. There's also industrial uses in the area, EJE recycling, as well as a warehouse facility on Shepherd Mill Road, just to the north of US two sixty-four east. The Invision Pitt County Future Land Use Plan does show this area as being employment or industrial for future growth, also some commercial nodes along two sixty-four, and the site is highlighted here, showing that industrial area. This designation contains a mix of office, industrial, and institutional uses. It may include a variety of supporting heavy and light commercial uses. The surrounding residential uses should be separated from the high-intensity commercial and industrial uses, where noise, odors, and other negative effects may be expected. This area is located on lands designated as employment or industrial, on the future land use map, or other prime industrial lands. The uses, light to heavy, industrial, commercial, office, and agricultural uses, and utility access is typically served by community water and on-site septic systems, although public sewer may be available in some areas. Our land use plan also has a policy to encourage quality development and reduce impacts of existing uses. This new, this is to encourage new industrial uses to be located in areas where historic industrial uses are present or existing, and also away from existing residential development. It also has a policy for economic development included in that future land use plan, which promotes the development of high-quality planned industrial parks, and appropriate locations for light industrial uses. And as you can see, our zoning map here, the site is again outlined in black, and the existing zoning designations in this area, of course, there is the industrial area just adjacent to the east of this property, where EJE recycling and Landfield is located, as well as you'll see the industrial area just to the north of this property, which was once used for the storage of utility poles, and they grinded those up for fuel material. Also some commercial activity at the intersection of NC thirty and two sixty-four east, as well as down towards Shepherd, Shepherd Mill Road. The proposed zoning is light industrial. This use is intended to accommodate limited manufacturing, warehouse, wholesale, and commercial support uses, that have little or no adverse impact to the surrounding property. This district is intended to have access to a major thoroughfare, which in this case is two sixty-four east, and has the necessary utilities to support such development. Pitt County staff finds that this request is consistent with the Invision Pitt County twenty forty-five comprehensive land use plan, and given that it's in close proximity to other general commercial and general industrially zoned properties. Planning staff also finds that this request is reasonable and in the public's interest, because the site has spatial separation from any residential zoning areas or residences, and also that its intended use will have no impact, or adverse impact, on the surrounding properties. The planning board has reviewed this request on April sixteenth, their April sixteenth meeting, and voted five to two to recommend denial of this request, and advised that it was not consistent with Invision Pitt County twenty forty-five comprehensive land use plan, and it was not reasonable, because it would have adverse impacts to the residents. So staff still contends that it is consistent with the land use policy, and that there's enough spatial separation from land uses, or from residential structures. So our recommendations is to adopt the consistency statement stating that it is consistent with the Invision Pitt County twenty forty-five comprehensive land use plan, and that it is reasonable and in the best interest of the public, because it does have that spatial separation from residential, residential properties. And then, the second motion is to approve the request by CND to rezone the one hundred and twenty-two point seven-one acres. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you for the public hearing.
All right, I will declare the public hearing open. Anybody?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we only have two people signed up to speak, both in favor of this rezoning request. If the attorney will read the statement, the first speaker is Brian Fagundis.
Thank you. With this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the CND Incorporated rezoning request. Please state your name, address, and the name of any organization you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Brian Fagundis. I'm with ARC Consulting Group, we're a civil engineering firm here in Greenville. I'm here in favor and on behalf of CND Landfield. I think Jonas did a really good job explaining the compliance with the land use plan and the twenty forty-five Invision Plan goals. I don't have a whole lot to add with that. I do want to remind you guys that, and we didn't have a map, I wish I had brought a map that I could distribute, that does show the future land use plan. So starting at what we would call Circle Y intersection, where thirty comes back in, you've got the commercial node there, and effectively headed east, all the way, thank you, John, headed east all the way along the red, and this is going to be difficult to see, I don't mind passing it around if you guys are okay with that, but the commercial being here, and future land use plan map asks for this gray area to be the industrial area, perfect. Thank you. There you go. The map he's showing right now, thank you, Jonas. So with the red area at the intersection node, that would be the commercial, the rest of the gray being what the land use plan asks for in an industrial nature, and so we are requesting light industrial, not general but light, and so in compliance with the land use plan, and this rezoning still retains, I'll use that phrase, a buffer surrounding this area, so it doesn't go as far west or as far south as what this landowner owns with this single parcel. And be reminded that to the east is where the EJE recycling center is, that's been in operation since the late nineties. So you've got industrial activity in this area, so this is really the continuation of that district. So with that, guys, glad to answer any questions, otherwise, appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
If he has anything to add, John Van Cutrin.
My name is John Van Cutrin. I'm with the Overton Group, I'm a commercial real estate advisor and a CCI-M designee. I'm here in favor of the actual rezoning for EJE or CND Landfield, for the light industrial zoning. I want to compliment you on a very thought-out and well-put-together Horizons twenty forty-five plan. As a commercial real estate advisor and an economic developer, we use this for, to recruit and bring in high-level global businesses to Pitt County, and also to establish massive economic impact, job growth, and so forth. We use this in sales events, which takes future years for us to bait and bring in industry to Pitt County. So us sticking with the Horizons twenty twenty-four plan, is a twenty forty-five plan, is a huge benefit for us to go and market and bring economic impact to Pitt County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all that we have.
All right. We will now close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Don't forget you got clicker. Hold on, we've got, remember if you want to speak, you have to click your clicker, and then you will be showing up here when it is your turn to talk.
Okay. Then I own.
Where did you go?
I'm the chairman.
You are own. You were. Now you are. Oh, don't hit it again. When you're red, you own. Now there you go, you went back. Well, go here.
I'm own.
Now you should be own.
Okay. I think you mentioned, Jonas, that the planning board denied this request.
Yes, sir.
And what purpose of, was that for their denial, specifically?
There was an individual at the planning board meeting who spoke in opposition to this request, who owned property near it. That's the only thing I can attribute the recommendation for denial.
Any, any residents here that, that spoke for denial? Do we have anybody in the audience?
I do not believe the gentleman that was at the planning board meeting is here tonight.
Okay.
And just for clarification, he owned property in the area, he does not live in the area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so, it's a little confusion. When you are in the queue, you will be green. When you are ready to speak, it will go red. So if I hear this next, she should go red. There you go.
Can I make a motion? I would like to make a motion to approve the request for rezoning.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote when it pops up.
I did not see Commissioner Nunley was here. If I could, if we could go back, so that I can add him to this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's all right. This should work.
All right. All right, and motion passes eight to eight.
And Mr. Chairman, we'll need an additional motion for the consistency statement and reasonableness.
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and second. We're now vote, please vote.
I'll be doing the same thing.
You got to do the consistency statement to say that it does. All right, head close. All right, moving right along, motion passes.
Door's still open for tickets?
No, ma'am. All right, we'll move on to the Happy Trails. Jonas, you're still up.
Okay, the next item on your agenda is the rezoning request from Happy Trails LLC. This request is to rezone 3.32 acres of their property, which is located on the northern side of Worthington Road, west of its intersection with Toll Road, from rural residential to general commercial con district district to operate a self-storage warehouse facility. A similar request was heard by the planning board back in February 21st of 2024 and the board, the planning board voted nine to zero to recommend denial of that request. There, after the meeting, the petitioner chose to withdraw the request and not bring it before the commissioners at that time, but to make some revisions based on the comments received at that planning board meeting in February of 24. Since that time, they have resubmitted the request with those changes. Just to show you, illustrate for you where this site is located, it's located to the west of NC 43 South, along Worthington Road, just west of its intersection again with Toll Road. The existing land use in the area, the area in blue is D H Conley High School, so it is almost adjacent to the high school. You'll see a commercial property in red adjacent to the site, which is an existing mini storage facility. I do want to point out that this mini storage facility predates our zoning ordinance, so it was not developed within the guidelines of our zoning ordinance, but an existing use when zoning was adopted. There's also a commercial operation on the south side of Worthington Road, just to the west of this site, which is a auto repair shop in, behind a residence there. Also along Mills Road, at the intersection of Mills Road and NC 43 South, there is a convenience store located in that area. Otherwise, it's heavily residential along Worthington Road on the northern side, as well as the southern side of Toll Road. The NC 43 South land use, future land use map shows there is a commercial node identified at the intersection of Worthington, NC 43 and Mills Road. Otherwise, it's rural residential, shown here with some environmental and floodplain open space area depicted in the darker shade of green. The future land use designation is rural residential or agricultural. This area is characterized by working farms, larger homesteads and associated institutional low-density, single-family residential areas. Lot size are based on the quality of the soils in this area and when possible, preservation of environmental features should be prioritized. Some small-scale, non-residential land uses that have frontage along NC 43 South corridor may be allowed on a case-by-case basis with a conditional zoning district, which is what we have before you tonight. The zoning map shows rural agr- or rural residential in this area with some commercial activity, as I pointed out before. It just expands that commercial activity on the western side of that intersection of NC 43, which you'll see on the map. The general, the proposed zoning is general commercial conditional district. It's intended to accommodate a range of retail service, office and limited wholesale and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in the area that have access to the major thoroughfare and the necessary utilities. In this case, they are seeking a conditional district rezoning, which allows for the approval of specific use with reasonable conditions to assure the compatibility of that use and the neighboring properties that surround it. In this case, again, the proposed use is a self-storage warehouse facility. Go over the site plan a little bit and point out a few key factors that they have submitted and attempted to address concerns with. The proposed area is shown in red. They are proposing a six-foot chain link fence with three-strand barbed wire at the top of that six-foot fence around the entire perimeter of the facility. The buildings, there are 37 proposed storage units. The majority of them are 25 by 50 feet for each space, with the exception of three units on the southern portion, which they had to reduce in size to meet the setback requirements. The driveway and parking area is shown in gray with a stormwater pond proposed to address any drainage concerns, as well as two dumpster pads that will be installed to collect the waste. Screening, they have two berm areas proposed to screen where the existing vegetation is not present, especially along Worthington Road, and to accompany the existing vegetation along the northern property line between the storage facility and the residential area. And you can see there is also some existing vegetation present on site that will remain intact. And there are two easements, one being the Piedmont Natural Gas Line that runs from north to south to the west of the property, as well as a drainage easement along the rear. So Pitt County staff finds that this request is consistent with the NC 43 South land use Additionally, the proposed rezoning is located in close proximity of other non-residential uses within the vicinity, including a similar self-storage facility adjacent. We also find that the request is reasonable and in the public's interest because there are, again, several commercial uses in this area, including another self-storage facility. And we feel that it will not generate a significant amount of traffic and it will be screened from any residential structures. The planning board reviewed this request at the April 16th meeting and voted seven to nothing to recommend approval. So with that, have your consistency statements saying that it is consistent with the land use plan and it is reasonable, as well as the second motion that staff recommends is approving the request to rezone the property from rural residential to general commercial conditional district with the following conditions. No zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan is prepared and submitted and reviewed for approval. A landscaping plan is also required. The required parking spaces, access drives, loading areas shall be paved by use of concrete or asphalt. A soil erosion and sedimentation control plan is required, as well as a stormwater plan, and they must comply with emergency management's requirements for fire protection. They must also obtain all permits from our inspections department, ensuring that their structure is constructed according to their regulations, as well as a driveway permit from NC DOT. The facility shall only operate as a general storage facility, meaning no businesses can operate out of that for commercial use. And the units, 37 of them, shall be a minimum of 25 by 50, except for units one, two and three in Building B, which are smaller in order to meet the setback requirements. Hours of operations shall be limited from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM and access to the facility must be provided for all first responders. Security cameras must be installed at the facility and easements abutting the property shall remain in their natural state. So with that, I'll answer any questions or open the public hearing.
All right, we'll declare the public hearing open.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven people signed up to speak, six against, one in favor. The first speaker, if the attorney will read the statement.
Yes, ma'am. With this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the Happy Trails LLC rezoning request. Please state your name, address, and the name of any organization you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak.
First speaker is Kathy Sikowski.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Sikowski, 2052 Toll Road, Greenville, North Carolina, of course. I'm going to read this. Sorry, I can't take the time to repeat what I shared with the planning board about our firsthand experience of living with storage sheds as our backyard. We still wonder how these storage sheds ever appeared when we bought the residential property as Woodland Point. Woodland Point soon became Brother Storage. But I do want to tell you about an incident that we had three weeks ago. Some thoughtless client of storage sheds dropped off two puppies in the storage shed area. I called the owner of Brother Storage, asking for someone to come and please rescue these puppies. No response. To make a long story short, we as neighbors were able to get assistance to rescue these puppies. Whether many or maxi, storage sheds are a nuisance and those with experience living with them 24/7 can make that claim. We are a residential area and ask you not to allow another beautiful piece of property to become storage sheds. Thank you.
Steve Craig.
My name is Steve Craig. I live at 1643 Toll Road. In the zoning ordinance, it says, the, the primary statement of objectives, it says it needs to serve the public interest. We don't understand how another storage facility in a rural residential area serves the public interest when the county already has over 80 public storage facilities, half a dozen within the immediate vicinity of where we live. The proposal tonight says that they're going to be larger storage facilities, but there's two, Blue Sky and Signature, which was newly constructed, have similar-sized units. It also states in the zoning ordinance that one of the objectives is to conserve the values of buildings and property. The population increasing in Pitt County, I don't think that anybody's calling up a real estate agent and saying, hey, can you find me a place next to a storage facility? Because they're a nuisance and an eyesore. Section D states that zoning seeks to preserve the desirable features of appearance and character. A storage facility is zoned general commercial, not rural residential. They aren't a desirable feature and they certainly are not characteristic of a residential, rural residential community. We purchased rural residential homes to live in a rural residential community. The general part, the general commercial parcels that were referred to earlier, Mills Market, was built in 1957, long before the zoning ordinance was ever adopted. The auto repair shop, it maintains the appearance of a private residence. None of us knew it was going to be constructed and we certainly would have opposed it. Self-Storage Brothers was created before the zoning ordinance was adopted. A search on OPUS shows that Happy Trails Farms in Woodland Point area owns parcels 37496 and 85699. It also comes back with results for 91 properties in the county. Strong evidence that Mr. Witcher is an investor. He never intended to live a residential and he never intended to live in Woodland Point. In a few minutes, there will be a proposal about this storage facility. You're going to talk about, like you heard before, about the berms and the fences and the lighting. None of it eliminates the nuisance issues. All it's saying in essence is it won't be as loud and it won't be as bright, but it's still going to be a nuisance. I wish I had more time because there's plenty more conflicts in the zoning ordinance with this proposal, but I only have three minutes. Hopefully you'll take that into consideration when you cast your vote. Our homes and our property are in your hands and we're begging you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Cartwright.
My name is Chris Cartwright and I live at 2030 Toll Road. I am here to speak against the rezoning of the property that is behind my home. I was born and raised in Florida before I joined Marine Corps in 1999. During that time, I managed to meet and marry an amazing woman of eastern North Carolina. After returning home from war and finishing out my contract, we decided to live here in Greenville and in less than a year found our home that we are currently at today. We both worked, we both went to college and we both graduated with honors. Then we went on to tackle our next challenge of building our family and we succeeded. Today, I work for a well-sought-out, security-integrated with my 20 years of experience. My office is in Cary and I mostly work at a Rocky Mount site. We raise and homeschool our boys here because this is a good place. I would love for my parents and grandparents to live here as well. I and many others want to keep our residential places residential and build where it is appropriate. We have today a commercial storage unit that is underutilized and would probably have not have been rezoned, recommended for rezoning had it been requested today. So building another or any other commercial construction would most certainly not be appropriate. Commissioners, please help us to continue to keep Pitt County a great place to raise our families and a great place for our families and extended families to live. Thank you, all.
Thank you, sir.
Jacqueline Cartwright.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Cartwright of 2030 Toll Road and I am opposed to this rezoning request behind my home, which I addressed to all of you over email and would like to reiterate. As someone from a rural county in eastern North Carolina, the last thing we ever wanted to do is raise kids in the city, as my husband was. The allure of this area is what led me to choose Pitt County. An appearance and a quietness of the area is why I chose my home and I knew this is where I wanted to raise my children. Homeschooling is part of our daily home life, indoors and outdoors. Our backyard is our classroom and space for relaxation. The idea of having that and our safety and security taken away from us is heartbreaking. My husband works in the security industry and no, no longer works in Pitt County, but yet we chose to stay here because this is where we've put our resources into our home, made connections, where we brought our children home from the hospital and where we teach them every day. He can attest that living with a storage facility behind our backyard is not true security in our homes and it does not make us feel safe. There have been multiple instances of the property owner not being respectful toward the residential community. Additionally, the proposed site and the questionably enforceable concessions made do not address every issue, but ignores many of them. The planning board simply did not fully address many of the concerns we brought up at the last meeting. We live in several, with several impositions, as Ms. Kathy spoke about, by being right by another storage facility. We have experienced enough with this already regarding trash, noise and flooding. Adding more concrete will add more to the flooding issues, making our backyard useless. We already deal with enough imposing lights shining directly into our homes. This current mini storage was used as a springboard for an automotive business down the road, as you saw, and now the current mini storage is furthermore being used as a springboard for another commercial business behind our homes that's rather large scale. The original mini storage was never approved in a residential area in the first place as the land use plan was not in place and there was no public discourse. To me, this simply nulls and voids the argument. On top of that, Happy Trails owns more property next to this, this proposed rezoning and is likely to be used as a springboard for more rezoning requests. This was a peaceful residential community anchored with a school, long before a developer decided to chase aspirations in a residential. decided to chase aspirations in a residential community. Of all the many storage units in our area, all over the county, there are none that sit on top of anyone's backyard among permanent housing. It is simply unfair to take from us for the personal gain of one person who will not have to live next door to storage units nor feel uncomfortable in his own home. He's asking you to carve out an exception for a business that does not directly benefit anyone in this neighborhood. We ask that you preserve our residential aesthetic and safeguard our neighborhood's security so that we can remain and safely raise our children here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Maggie Craig.
My name is Maggie Craig. I live at 1643 Toll Road. I would like to just go over some of the rezoning objectives. One of them is, does this project promote the general welfare and conserve land value? And the answer is no. It doesn't preserve land value for us. Zoning laws are put into place to protect property owners from sudden changes and to stabilize land values. Putting a storage facility in the backyard of several's homes does not increase our property value and will create an eyesore in an otherwise beautiful, wooden neighborhood. I'm sorry, but chain-linked fence, razor wire, it's not a good look. Mr. Witcher owns several of these properties, and he doesn't have to live with the consequences of the projects like we do. Not one permanent job from this project will be created, and there are several other companies in the area that fill this need for storage. And then the next issue is, does this protect the natural environment? My husband and I purchased land next to this place here so that my daughters might have a place to build a home someday. The lots are wood. It's beautiful. There are environmental concerns. The proposed area will require the destruction of acres of trees and the displacement of wildlife into residential areas. On our land, we've seen bears, deer, several species of birds, and let alone the little tiny creatures that contribute to the wet ecosystem. What will become of these if the facility is built? I think we're all tired of driving around the county and seeing downed animals on the side of the road. The clearcutting of this land will only make this problem worse and further endanger the natural canopy of the county. The acreage that would be used for this project is located on an area titled Indian Well Swamp. Well, if you put concrete on there, we know what's going to happen. You can put in a little retention pond, but the other area around there will just flood into the other neighbor's land. Does this minimize land use conflicts? I'm a Connolly mom. I've sat in traffic on Worthington Road trying to get into the Connolly parking lot. I'm begging you, please do not add to the problems of traffic in this county. I'm sure you guys hear left and right about the traffic in the county. Please do not add this in our neighborhood. It's already too dangerous and too congested for teenage drivers. Having more cars and commercial trucks entering and exiting the facility directly across from the high school would create yet more congestion and frustration in the area. Why would we add to these traffic problems when we can just keep this rural residential? Finally, does this preserve the desirability of the area? And no, it doesn't. As I said before, you can put up some trees to cover the front of it, but this is not going to add any beauty or value.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Frances Mills.
My name is Frances Mills. My husband, Laverne Mills, and I live right beside the school. We built our home in 1966, way before the school came. But the school came, and the traffic is galore. And putting storage bins, additional storage bins will cause more traffic. We had to move our mailbox because of the traffic into my yard, and I almost got hit one day flying by. So I would appreciate you guys voting against the storage bins. It's right in front of my house, the ones that they want to build. And I understand Mr. Witcher owns the land, but he lives way across town. He would not want the storage bins in front of his house. The lights from the other storage buildings shines right into my house. I had to get curtains to block out the lighting, and the lighting is on the building itself. It's not up. So I would appreciate you guys voting against it, because we have been there ever since 1966. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Last one, Mike Baldwin.
I'll ask the two of you to share. Mr. Lawhorn and Mr. Manning, have you all shared a form? I've already given John this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Mike Baldwin, and I represent Woody Witcher, who is the managing member of Happy Trails Farms. Woody is a native of Pitt County. Woody does own a lot of property in Pitt County. Woody is a very good businessman, and Woody's, a lot of the properties that he owns have turned into very nice projects. I submitted this plan to the planning board in February of '24, and it didn't take a rocket scientist in zoning to figure out that the kite wasn't going to get off the ground. It was, I think, almost unanimous against it. So I told Woody, I said, "We've got to do something." And the changes to the plan since then, that I submitted to the planning board last month, we reduced the building footprint about eight thousand square feet. We reduced the units from forty-three to thirty-seven. We've given you a lighting plan that has, all the lights are on the facade of the buildings, no area lights. We've moved the buildings E and F from the rear property line from twenty feet. Now we're right at just a foot shy of sixty feet. We're protecting that with the natural growth, and we're putting a berm, five-foot-high berm, with landscaping across the top of it. I've also added a berm on Worthington Road at each corner of the entrance, and we're leaving the existing vegetation that falls between the berm and the rear property line. We've also, as discussed in the planning board, we've got just about every other kind of restriction on this property to allow for a good neighbor use. It is not razor wire fence, it's barbed wire fence that normally goes on top of a six-foot-high security fence. If you look at the maps I gave you, and what gives this a stigma, a negative stigma, is the existing storage next door. And it is mini storage. This is not mini storage. A 25 by 50 is not mini storage. This facility has thirty-seven doors. The facility next door to it has 200 doors. Instead of seventy-five doors per acre, this facility has 12 doors per acre.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Quick three minutes, ain't it? It went fast. Thank you. Anybody else sign up to speak?
There's no one else signed up to speak.
All right, we will now close the public hearing. Any questions from Commissioners? Any comments? If you want to comment, please hit your button. You're in green. You don't? Let's see. There you should be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very similar to the last time we had a zoning request, my opinion hasn't really changed. I'm really concerned about residential property and protecting residential property, because for most folks, that's their biggest investment in their lifetime, is their home. It's their safe place, and where they want to raise their kids and so forth, and anything that might affect that gives me concern. For this particular application, I counted thirty-seven units in this proposal. I have experience of what goes on inside some of these self-storage places from my career, and that's criminal activity, narcotics, and even explosive devices inside these units, because once you rent those thirty-seven units out, that owner loses control of what's going on on their property, quite frankly. So just from what I know, in my experience, I can't support this being this close to residential property, and I will intend to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Question about the future land use plan. Do you have a commercial node that's removed and does not directly abut the residences? I guess you've got, seems like you've got a natural border there when the land use plan was made. This is an encroachment on the rural residential area that's next to it, got an existing use that seems to be somewhat disruptive to the character of the neighborhood. Why, when the future land use plan was made, was that node not extended out to capture this area? Or was it really not extended because the character of that area was really residential and not commercial?
Again, the commercial node is along the thoroughfare itself for that commercial activity. In this case, the existing commercial development in that area supported the possibility of extending the commercial to the adjacent property, per the future land use plan.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
I'd like to speak to the lady back in the back. Ma'am, yes, ma'am. Could you come up, please? In recognizing the concerns that you have and listening to the changes that were made, how do you feel about the changes that was made concerning your situation?
Sir, well, initially, the planning commission had voted ninety-zero in our favor, and then he came and he made some changes and hired a lighting person from Raleigh. He put up a berm with some trees on it, which I appreciate his attempt to do this, but really, when it comes down to it, it's really lipstick on a pig. These units here, they're supposed to be for large commercial view, I'm assuming for commercial businesses, because they're large units. It's not somebody who's going to be putting their dorm room in there. This is going to be big business. This is business stuff. And that need for that type of storage has already been fulfilled in these other places in Signature and Blue Sky. So when you think about, when are these people going to be coming in and out of this facility? It's in the morning when the school is starting, and it's in the afternoon when school's getting out. So that was my traffic concern. So the other thing that he talked about, it was strange, the noise of those doors going up. It's, you know, they're industrial-sized store, these are large units. He said so himself. Someone said, "Well, just put some WD-40 on it." Like, you know, as if this is going to solve the problem of the noise pollution in the area. I don't, as it's been stated, we built, we bought this land in hopes that one day our daughters would build a house there, because it's so marshy, but on the other end of it is a place that's suitable for a home. And you start putting, you know, little carve-outs of commercial area, that just drops the value of everything. And I mean, ultimately, I'm afraid of the incrementalism, too, because let's be serious here. This is three acres. He owns more parcels down there. This isn't going to stop there. He's going to come back, and he's going to give you nice shiny diagrams. He's going to hire somebody to come, you know, make it look pretty, but ultimately, we're the little guy here. We're just trying to protect what we have. So, and that's why we're begging you, please, listen to us. These are our only assets. This owner, he's got several assets, and again, he does not have to live with the consequences of this. We do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make the motion to find that we not approve it. I did push it. It just didn't turn red.
I move that we not approve this plan, and that I don't see that it's consistent with the rural residential area around it.
Got a motion and a second, if we can please vote. It'll pop up in just a second.
You put no. Yes to the motion. Yes. If you agree with the motion, you vote yes. Yeah. I thought you said, okay.
I thought the motion was to deny.
If you vote yes, you're denying, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Motion carries. Now, I believe you also have to have a statement. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair. I believe he mentioned the consistency statement. Unfortunately, the reasonableness would need to be in there as well. So if we could make a motion that this is, I believe it's inconsistent with the land use plan and not reasonable, I'm not trying to put words in Commissioner Manning's mouth, but not reasonable or in the public interest, and the reason why.
How about if I move to what he just said?
That sounds good to me, if we can get a second. We got a second. Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, corporate extension annual report, Mr. Matt Stevens.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Manager. Thank you for allowing me to stand in front of you and present our annual cooperative extension report, which we, in the parlance of cooperative extension, refer to as our report to the people. North Carolina Cooperative Extension is a strategic partnership between county, state, and federal government agencies, along with our two land-grant universities in North Carolina, NC State University and NCA&amp;T State University. We have 101 county offices across the state. And I represent, obviously, the Pitt County office. Our mission is to educate citizens in the county in the areas of agriculture, food and nutrition, and youth development. We often describe extension as providing research-based information from the land-grant system and sharing that in our communities. And while that is true, that's not a one-way information exchange. We like to think of that as sort of an ongoing cyclical conversation. Our county staff are familiar with farms, businesses, and families in the county. We use our relationships and our familiarity with those groups to identify issues and challenges that extension might be able to help with. We bring that information to the university system and work together to identify solutions to those challenges and issues. And then we bring those solutions back to the community and help implement them. Statewide, extension will tout a $2.1 billion annual economic impact in North Carolina and a 27 to 1 return on, return on investment of government investments. Locally in Pitt County, I've prepared a report for you with several numbers and figures. And I'm not going to repeat all those numbers and figures as I stand in front of you. But I do want to sort of provide some information that will contextualize and explain what some of those numbers mean. And since you recognized a group of 4Hers at your last meeting, I want to start with 4H and talk about that program. Our 4H Youth Development Program educates youth in the county ages 5 through 19 on a variety of subjects with the goal of providing life skills within all of those lessons. Sometimes 4H is thought of as something that's only for kids who grow up on a farm. And that's simply not true. We provide a variety of educational experiences. Certainly, many of them are related to agriculture as that's one of our key focus areas, but not all of those programs. So in 2024, we reached over 8,000 youth in Pitt County through our educational 4H programs. And about a third of those were agriculture-related. And we made knowledge gains with our youth participants in understanding animals and agriculture systems. Those youth contacts include in-school enrichment programs, after-school programs, 4H summer camps, 4H clubs, and other types of activities. In addition to agriculture, our participants learned about volunteerism, family and consumer science, food and nutrition, civic engagement, and a variety of other specific topics. But within all of those, we taught life, life lessons. We had 200 summer camp participants in 2024. Those summer camps generally are week-long camps. So if you're participating in one of our camps, we have you for eight hours a day for five days a week. So we have more opportunity to teach you and engage with you than we do in maybe a one-off lesson in a school. We have 283 4H club members. Most of those clubs meet once a month throughout the year. So again, we have more time to spend with those individuals and provide learning opportunities for them. We had approximately 65 participants in competitive programs that also meet regularly to engage in those competitions. And those last three things are really, you know, higher level of participation in our programs. And some of those experiences sort of stack on one another and create broader, broader experiences for our participants. So to give you an example of how some of those things work and how we use specific teaching opportunities to teach broader life concepts, we have several different livestock projects that youth can participate in. Some of these are local projects. Some of them are regional projects. The Coastal Plains Chicken Project is one that 10 counties in the southeast, just southeast area of North Carolina participate in. We had 252 youth from those 10 counties participate in 2024. We also had the Down East Dairy Project, which we are thankful for Simply Natural Creamery for hosting that project. It's a project that takes place over three to four months where youth are able to raise a dairy cow and then show that animal in a culminating show at the end of the project. And so the broader life lessons that they learn through these projects, they're, as they care for the animal, they're learning respect for life, responsibility of caring for that animal. They're learning some about animal genetics, the differences between breeds. They're learning about anatomy and physiology of animals. They're learning about life cycles. And then when they have their culminating show at the end of the project, they are essentially doing a presentation of sorts. Maybe not a verbal presentation, but they're standing in front of an audience and trying to communicate an idea. So they, they learn the poise and the self-confidence and the expressive capabilities necessary to get their information across to that audience. Similarly, we have a livestock judging team who works throughout the year at perfecting the art of livestock judging. You can see in the picture, our team members participate in a lot of shows. They've earned a lot of individual and team awards for their judging abilities. Through the livestock judging process, they, again, learn specific things about the animals that they're judging. They learn about anatomy and physiology, different differences between the breeds. They learn how to evaluate scientifically the sort of muscle mass and, and, you know, body structure of the animals to determine what, you know, places them in rank in a show. So they're thinking creatively. They're solving problems. They're using critical thinking skills. And then again, when they communicate why they've ranked the animals, what, how they have, they have to essentially convince someone that they're, they're right. They have to make a convincing argument. It's not unlike being on a debate team and researching something and then convincing your audience that your point of view is, is correct. So are all these students going to become professional judges on the livestock show circuit? Probably not. But we have taught them over many years. Many of these participants have been part of this team for two, five, seven years. We've taught them that specific skill so they have that as an option. But they have the broader life context of those, those life skills. This is the group that you met last month. And I want to, want to highlight one individual from this group. They all have unique stories. But I want to highlight Ashlyn Cox, who is the young lady in the glasses standing next to our county manager. You might remember Ashlyn from last week, last meeting as the one who was sort of guiding our group as we scrunched in to all fit in that picture. She was telling everybody to come close and find their windows, make sure everybody could be seen in that picture. Ashlyn's story is unique. But it also is representative of how these experiences that 4Hers have build on one another and are perhaps difficult to, to capture in a single-year report. Ashlyn started with 4H in 2014 when she was in second grade. She participated in one of our cooking camps and then quickly learned about our lamb and goat camp and decided that that sounded like something that would be fun as well. So she joined Lamb and Goat Camp and learned about those animals and participated in a livestock show, which led to her beginning to show livestock herself and joined the livestock judging team. So she's been a member of that team for five years. She's been a youth voice delegate. She has been a officer in her club. She has been a county council officer, a district officer, statewide 4H officer. In a few weeks, she will be graduating from high school. And she intends to study zoology at the NC State Vet School. So her formative experiences with livestock judging, livestock showmanship, and 4H camps have led her down a very direct path of study and potential career. In agriculture, we work with farmers, often established farmers. Not necessarily training them from the big, the ground up on how to farm. These are largely people who have established farm practices. But they need from us information about new varieties, new pest management strategies, new ways to combat issues that occur on the farm because of weather abnormalities and, and things like that. So we work with our state specialists to communicate those results, those solutions to our farmers at the county level. We work with all types of farmers, whether it be livestock, fruit and vegetables, row crops. And we provide them the information that they need. We offer certification trainings for things that they use on the farm, whether it be pesticide, animal waste credits, things of that nature. We also have a recurring pesticide disposal program. So we collect unused products from farms, landscapes, nurseries, home gardens, and dispose of those safely to keep our environments safe and clean. One of our most impactful programs in the agriculture side is our annual peanut pod blasting program. If you're familiar with how peanuts grow, they're a sort of low-growing vine where the edible part of the plant is underground. So a farmer who's getting ready to harvest their crop can't see the part of the crop that they're harvesting and selling. So it's very difficult to look out at a field and say, they're ready to pick. So the pod blasting technique is a method to determine the optimum time to harvest that crop to maximize yield and quality of the crop. So farmers will harvest a very small sample from their fields, bring them to these series of workshops that we offer. We will literally blast the shelled peanuts with a pressure washer. The high-intensity spray of the water will discolor the shells in different, different colors depending on the firmness and tenderness of the, of the shell of the peanut. And so that color gives us an indication of whether they're ready to pick or whether they need two more days, five more days, seven more days, so on. Research has shown over the years that maximizing your yield and quality by using the right picking date can provide up to 10% increase on your crop value. And in 2024, probably because of the uncertainty caused by weather abnormalities during the year, we had the largest number of participants in our pod blasting that we've ever had. About 87% of Pitt County's acreage was represented in those workshops. And by following the practices and harvesting at the prescribed date of the pod blasting, indicated by the pod blasting technique, rather than sort of a predetermined calendar date, our growers saw an increase of $1.6 million. So a significant amount of, of money. We do have, however, work with beginning farmers and young, young farmers, transitioning farmers. We do that primarily through a program called the NC Farm School. Often, young farmers and beginning farmers need different types of information and resources from us than these established farmers. So the Farm School focuses mainly on business management practices, record-keeping, risk management, accounting, those sorts of fundamental financial and business practices from an agriculture standpoint. Every year, we host NC Farm Schools throughout the state. And Pitt County has participated in those in several occasions. The picture that you see there, it might be difficult to tell what's happening, but that is a field day from our 2024 class at the farm of a graduate of our 2021 class. So that's Lorinda Parker from Swift Creek Harvest, who's a local pecan, vegetable, and mushroom farmer, vendor at the Leroy James Farmers Market, talking to the 2024 class about her experience as a new farmer. One of our participants from Pitt County in that 2024 Farm School program also received, through the help of Cooperative Extension, an Ag Ventures, NC Ag Ventures grant for $6,600 that helped support renovation of a facility where he grows microgreens. So that's an example of how we support, the different ways that we support a new farmer versus an established farmer. Third focus area, food and nutrition programs. So we have two different programs that work on food and nutrition. We have our Family and Consumer Science Program and our Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program. The Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program focuses on helping low-income, underserved audiences make better food choices and increase physical activity. Family and Consumer Science is a little bit more broader, but essentially focuses on food and nutrition, food safety, and food preservation. So as a result of those programs, 1,444 adult participants reported dietary changes, whether it be increase in fruit and vegetable uptake, decrease in sodium intake, or some other dietary change. Over 700 participants increased knowledge of food preparation and preservation through canning workshops and other preservation activities. And our FNEP program mainly focused on youth audiences in 2024 and reported increase in fruit and vegetable intake and increased physical activity with over 500 students that we served through those programs. Two pictures here that I put together. One is our FNEP educator teaching a food demonstration. And the other is our Family and Consumer Science agent at what we call the Donation Station, which is, in this case, at the Leroy James Farmers Market. The Donation Station is a statewide extension initiative that Pitt is one of 14 counties that participated. In 2024, essentially, we ask customers at the Farmers Market to buy a little bit more and then donate some of their produce to the Donation Station. And then we reallocate that produce to food pantries, food banks, and other food insecure locations. I paired these pictures together because we believe that those two pieces go together. If you give people food, but they don't know how to prepare it, how to use it, they don't know what to do with it, you haven't really helped and fed those people. So the, the goodwill of the donation along with the education piece of how to prepare that food is incredibly important. And so when we do these donation stations, we'll often have a food sample, a recipe demonstration that goes along with, with the collection of the food items. Lastly, I'll be remiss if I don't mention our volunteers. We have eight staff members in our Pitt County office, but we have over 100 volunteers who work in a variety of programs, primarily our 4H and Master Gardener programs. In 2024, we had over 8,000, 8,000 hours of volunteer service that were contributed by our volunteers. And the value associated with that is over $279,000. In addition to that, on, just this past Saturday, we held our annual Master Gardener Plant Sale. So our volunteers in the Master Gardener Program not only teach gardening classes, not only maintain the gardens at the Pitt County Arboretum, but they also raise money to support the arboretum. So in addition to their, the value of their volunteer time, in 2024, through the plant sale, they raised over $20,000 to support maintenance and growth of the Pitt County Arboretum. raised over $20,000 to support maintenance and growth of the Pitt County Arboretum. The report that I printed out and shared with you all is available online at our website along with the statewide NC State Annual Summary from 2024. So those are available to you in digital form as well as the paper copy that I gave you this evening, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Not seeing any. Thank you, sir, for that very extensive and informative report. Now, Mr. Russell Hill, April 2025 tax collection report, please, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Holloman, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. This evening, I present to you the April Tax Collection Report. The fiscal year combined tax collection report through April 30th for real and personal property was 98.92%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 99.03%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation to approve the tax collection report as presented.
Go ahead and motion in a second, please vote. Mr. Sam Kruen.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring you the April 30th, 2025 Finance Report for the General Solid Waste and EMS Funds. We are 10 months into the fiscal year, or 83.3%. For the General Fund, we have collected 82.6% of anticipated revenues and spent 75% of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we have collected 92.5% and spent 84.6%. EMS, we have collected 96.9% and spent 80.6%. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
Second.
Go ahead and motion in a second, please vote. Motion carries. All right, County Manager, you up?
Yes, for your manager's report this evening, I'd like to start with a happy birthday to Commissioner Melvin McQuahorn, as he celebrates a lucky number year this year. Next, we have your meeting dates. Your next meeting will be in this room on June 2nd. You'll follow by your public hearing on the budget, June 3rd at 6:00 PM in this room, and your second meeting in June on the 16th, right here. A reminder that county offices will be closed on May 26th in observance of Memorial Day so that we have an opportunity to remember all of those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our nation. Item C, Tiffany Peterson is in the audience. If you'd stand Tiffany. For those of you who haven't met Tiffany, Tiffany is our Animal Services Director. She's joined us this evening because I wanted to give a shout out to an incredible vaccination clinic that she offered to the community two Saturdays ago. And in that event, she offered 146 rabies vaccinations, 65 microchips were implanted, and it was done in partnership with the Pitt County Public Health Department, who provided those vaccinations. Her staff rallied together, and they did a phenomenal job serving the community. And I wanted to share that with the board and thank Tiffany and let you see the face behind all of the hard work. The next item on your agenda is, I wanted to make the board aware of a request for a letter of support to the Duke Endowment for Primary Care Learning Clinic in North Greenville. I received a request from Kishida Johnson Jackson, Vice President in the Office of Community Health at ECU Health, and she shared with me that due to a lack of primary care access in remote areas of the county, a high volume of low acuity emergency department visits from high social vulnerability zip codes, and a need for additional primary care training sites for growing Brody School of Medicine class size PA and physician assistant and nurse practitioner programs, that she and her team have proposed a solution to create a full-spectrum primary care learning center within one of the hotspot zip codes. It will serve as a primary care medical home continuously staffed by medical students during their family medicine clerkship, along with PA and NP students on a rotational basis. The clinic will be a fully functioning ECU Health Clinic with dedicated and fully credentialed family physician supervision daily. Patients will be assigned to the clinic as their primary care medical home for acute, chronic, and preventative health needs. The city of Greenville has been a strong supporter of this project, and they have committed $1 to $1.5 million over the next 10 years to support this initiative. And she is requesting from Pitt County Government a letter of support for further grant funding. And they are applying for significant funding from the Duke Endowment in order to fulfill this goal of primary care access and training in our community. The application is due in June, and she asks that we, as Pitt County Government, as a board, submit a letter of support in support of their application. And I wanted to seek the board's consensus before we prepared and sent that letter.
Yes, sir.
I was going to make the motion, but anyway.
You go ahead and motion in a second. Hold up, please vote. We'll get it right after a while.
Okay, thank you. I will work with Kishida Jackson to get that letter prepared to demonstrate our support for this project in the community. Not on your list, but worth a shout out, and some commissioners were aware, there was our building inspector, Chief Building Inspector Dean Burbage was working on a situation in Grifton that was a difficult issue involving a family that was living in an unpermitted structure. And as some of you have reached out to me, I just wanted to circle back on that issue to let you know that with the cooperation of the legal department, Tim Corley, our Deputy Manager, and Dean Burbage, that Dean used his skill set and has successfully resolved that situation. That situation had a deadline of the 15th of this month to either come into compliance or remove the structure, and that home was voluntarily removed by its owner. And so I'm pleased to report that that situation has been resolved, and I am deeply grateful to Dean Burbage for his skill in handling that matter. And then the last thing I have for you this evening is a budget update. After your week of budget workshops, you sent me back and the budget team back with a list of directions, and we have incorporated all of those directions into your proposed budget. And just to recap, we increased the budget to Pitt County Schools to increase the teacher supplement from 8.25% to 8.5% at a value of $460,409. We increased the one-time capital funding to Pitt Community College from $4.2 million to $7 million, an increase of $2.7 million, all funded by Article 46 Restricted Sales Tax to satisfy funding for those top projects that were identified. And then we made all recommended and directed changes in the Sheriff's Office Budget and the Detention Center Budget, which ultimately resulted in an increase of $395,793 between those two budgets. That is inclusive of the sheriff's raise with fringe, full allowance for clothing on a reimbursement basis, copy pro, increased training, hygiene kits, mattresses, and the recognition of RISE Pilot Program revenues entering into a capital expense fund, capital project fund that requires approval of the commissioners in order to spend. With those changes, your balanced budget has slightly increased from the $414,781,324 to $420,623,046. In order to make those changes and in order to keep your budget balanced, we pulled from restricted funds where available. We made some adjustments with regard to the funding for the cost of living. Once the board approved that 3% cost of living for all employees, which we had in a separate fund, we distributed across departments, which relieved some general fund because those departments that are enterprise funds or otherwise funded with restricted funds created some capacity. And then we took the balance and remainder and decreased, as directed, the $5 million set aside for the new administrative building and decreased that to $4.5 million so that we would remain in balance. With that, those changes have been made. At this point, your next step in the budget process is the public hearing, which will take place on June 3rd at 6:00 PM in this room. As we prepare for that evening, I'd just provide an opportunity for any further directions impacting the budget at this time so that we can come prepared with your final budget to that hearing. Commissioner Manning?
He ready?
Mr. Chairman, at the close of the workshops last week, I made a mention to the manager about the budget for the Council on Aging had not increased, and I just wanted to, and I just mentioned it, and she's looking into it to see if, anyway, it basically funds the nutrition program, which is also known as Meals on Wheels. And I'm volunteering for that program now. I've got to meet a lot of the clients and understand the program, and it is one of the programs that helps keep senior citizens in their home, which avoids the high cost of people being in nursing homes or assisted living facilities. And I think that's just a very good use of money.
What was the amount?
Well, I don't have the actual, I think the manager does, but I would recommend if whatever amount can be, you know, to help the Council on Aging with their food nutrition, senior nutrition program, would be, because there's almost, there's somewhere between 75 and 100 people on the waiting list, so they could use every bit we could afford to give them. But I realize we're trying to balance a budget, but whatever, I'll turn it over to the manager and let her tell you what she might can do.
All right.
Yes, we held the Council on Aging budget flat this year, as we did all sustaining agencies, but if it is the desire of the majority of the board to address the backlog in Meals on Wheels, the request for the home-delivered meals was $1,854. If the board is so inclined to add that into the budget, I will take that direction and can do so.
$1,854?
$1,854 is the request that Rich Zech made in his budget request to increase funding for home-delivered meals.
So moved to make a request for that?
We got a motion? And a second, please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you. Are there any other directions?
Hold on one second, all right.
Okay, so I also understand the budgetary constraints. However, I'd like to see support to the Leroy James Farmers Market. As we look at the board being dismantled by this board previously, I would like to offer some support in their vision moving forward. I have spoken with staff. Their current budget is $54,000, and I think realistically, given their vision to promote the quality foods, the support of the farmers, I've spoken with the vendors. It does appear as though we're moving in a great direction currently, and I have a lot of those details, you know, if anyone is interested in the specifics of that. But I would like to see if we can support even half of their budget, around that $20,000 to $25,000, to support that vision moving forward, not only to our farmers, but from an economic development perspective and how that ties into our local restaurants and so on and so forth.
Would you put that in a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to increase the budget by $25,000 in support of the Leroy James Farmers Market.
You have a motion? You have a second? Somebody ain't voting. Oh, there we go. Motion carries.
And then the only other two things that I want to make the board aware of for your consideration and any direction is, we presented to you in your budget package all of the requests from nonprofit and sustaining agencies that were received at the time we did that budget presentation. And there were two requests that were received after the fact, and I just wanted to make the board aware of them. If this is something that you are interested in hearing further about, I can answer any questions or bring it back to you at a future meeting, or if it's something that you want to act on or not act on, that would be within your discretion. Two of those that were just recently received after that presentation is a request from Victorious Living, an outreach of Christie Overton Johnson Ministries. She presented to this board earlier this year and indicated her desire to partner with the county on funding. We did not receive a request from her until within the last week, and she is requesting consideration of $15,000 from the Board of Commissioners. The second one was a request from the Pitt County District Attorney's Office for some additional cubicle furniture at a total cost of $90,167.75. In the spirit of making this board aware of everything I am aware of, because these were addressed to the county in general, I'm sharing those two late requests, and we'll take any direction either way on those. If not, we will take those two additions to the budget, prepare your final budget, and have that presented at the public hearing. But I'm open to any direction on that.
Yes, sir.
Well, I certainly think the Victorious Living is helping at the jail.
I thought you said they do the stuff at the jail.
Right.
They do.
And I think that's where worthy, if we can afford it. And the other thing I wanted to ask the manager, do you have in the budget about that election equipment?
Yes, the election equipment is included in the budget and was the number adjusted to its actual cost?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's all. But I mean, if we can...
Would you put that in motion, please, sir? Oh, hold on, we got another question. All right.
Okay. So you say that these requests were submitted within the last week?
Yes, so the Victorious Living request, I believe, came, so I was out of the office Thursday through today, and it came while I was out, so I received it today. The other one came after the presentation, but before that, we did have some cubicles available in the Technology Enterprise Center. I worked with Tim Corley and Ken Bran to see if those would suffice. Instead of this new request, they would not suffice. The District Attorney's Office is short on space and would like the type of cubicles that are in the sheriff's office to afford privacy.
And if these are approved, would this also come away from the money set aside for the county admin building?
So it would either come away from that fund or, given its amount, and we're talking about $15,000, $25,000, $1,890,000, we would work with financial services to determine if there was any leeway within projected revenues and expenditures to incorporate them and balance. There's a, or we could take away from an existing expenditure.
Because I don't want to see any more money come away from the county admin building. The air conditioning unit in here doesn't work, the septic, there's a lot of issues with the bathrooms. I don't want to see any more money come away from the money that we have set aside for
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to raise an issue, a concern about taking one off late recommendations on the budget. One of the parts of our process and management process is that you receive these requests, and then you provide our board a recommended adopted amount that's taken in total. I do think that it provides inequity to previous applicants if we have late applicants and those being considered outside of the budget cycle. So for that reason, I cannot support, I cannot support considering these, mainly because of the fact that we've already been presented, management teams already considered their proposed budget. We've considered those numbers, and the organizations, other organizations that did apply did not receive full recommendations. And to have late applicants potentially... And to have late applicants potentially receive a full amount, I think, does present some equity problems before our board. So for that reason, I would, I would, I would move that we table these two requests and that consider them in future budget cycles.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I have a second.
You have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Okay. That is the direction that we will then follow, bringing back a proposed budget to the public hearing, consistent with those instructions. And I remain confident and pleased with the numbers and the work that has gone in to this process. So that's all that I have.
All right. Moving on to items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second. Please vote. Moving on to items for discussion. Madam Manager, you up again?
Yes. On page 94 in your packet, you have an item that was added for discussion at the request of Commissioner Rochelle Brown for a first responders' support fund. In your materials, you will see some talking points that discuss the intent and the objective, as well as a proposed resolution. This item is on for discussion, and I will then turn it over to Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, to share her intent and objectives, and then I am happy to fill in and answer any questions with regard to implementation and/or funding.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow commissioners, thank you, staff and members of the public who are here. I will try to get through this really quickly so we can get to the important part, which is our discussion. But I'll just go through my perspective really quickly. Again, thank you for the opportunity to bring forward a resolution that's not only rooted in my personal commitment to this community, but grounded in a very, in the very platform that I actually ran on as a candidate, and that is supporting our first responders across Pitt County. When I campaigned for this role, I made it very clear that my intent would be strengthening the fire and the first responders of our community, not just in words, but in action. And this evening, I'm presenting a resolution that reflects that promise and begins laying the groundwork for more structured, transparent, and proactive approaches to how we support this critical service throughout Pitt County. We're all well aware of the many unmet needs here in Pitt County, and we've already taken the significant step as a board by approving the forward motion of a feasibility study to assess those needs comprehensively and factually. It does work in conjunction with, it is not a conflict with. So this resolution complements the feasibility study by establishing a foundation support mechanism, one that prepares us for what we can bear in the future while giving structure and consistency to how we respond to the needs that will be uncovered in front of us. Now, on to the concept itself. This initiative is not about reaching, not about reacting to a crisis or a single department request. It's about building a long-term plan for this entire county. It's about creating a system that supports every corner of Pitt County, from our rural fire departments, who often lack the resources and the voices that they need, to our municipalities, who are constantly working to serve the growing populations. It's about eliminating the silos that we are currently seeing and building partnerships and linking arms. Now, let me be clear, given the past conversations, this is not about one municipality fix. This is not a timeline conflict. This is about aligning strategy with our facts. This is a transparent effort to proactively prepare for what's ahead of this board, rather than scrambling to catch up and paying more down the road. So I believe that this timing is perfect. Counties across North Carolina, from Johnson, Cumberland, Wake, Onslow, I've called them all, I have spoken to them all. It is, the research has been done, and I've spoken with staff regarding that. They have already taken bold steps to modernize their support for emergency services across their counties. They've created task forces, tiered funding formulas, capital grants, advisory committees, and they've invested in their readiness. As a result, they've strengthened their communities. And tonight, I just am excited to say, why not Pitt County? Why not, right now, do we decide as a county to support the first response? So the resolution that I've introduced includes the following elements. I'll just hit on the highlights here. But an annual budget allocation specifically designed for fire first responder support, so based on past trends and the future data of this feasibility study. A support committee with representation from emergency services, municipality departments, finance experts, this board, and to further evaluate the funding requests and to track the needs. So this basically puts the experts at the forefront of the decision-making. And then a transparent application and review process to ensure all service providers, big and small, have equal access to support. So this is very important for our rural departments to have this current platform, as a lot of them feel as though they don't right now. Integration with our feasibility study, so our funding decisions align with the hard data and service benchmarks. So this would allow us to manage by fact and make concrete decisions based on the numbers that come back to us. A review of historical funding, so to provide transparency and demonstrate our fiscal responsibility as commissioners. Some budget items could very well be moved into this actual line item and not necessarily be new monies. It would just offer transparency and, again, consistency and fairness. And then the creation of a dedicated reserve fund for capital, operational support, annual rollover protection, and all of the things that we are hearing that these departments are struggling with across the county. And then lastly, when we look at how other counties are actually including municipalities, this is an inclusive look because our emergencies, they do not, the emergency response systems don't stop at the jurisdictional lines, jurisdictional lines, excuse me. When resources overlap, lives are saved, and including municipalities in this initiative helps us ensure that coordinated coverage reduces duplication and maximizes our effectiveness as a county through shared strengths and regional partnerships. This is repetitive, this is not repetitiveness, this is resilience. So the goal here is simple from my perspective, is to ensure that when Pitt County faces the next challenge, and we will, whether it's a growing population, natural disaster, recruitment crisis, we're ready. We're being proactive, not reactive. So tonight, I ask your thoughts, your perspective, your collaboration. This resolution is not a final solution, it is just a first step, and what I believe is very important. And I know with our great minds in this room, I believe that we can refine it, strengthen, and define the scope that will long-term leave a lasting legacy on how we support the first responders of Pitt County. So thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. End of discussion. Commissioner Manning's got his button in a little fast and gave you there. Commissioner McGlaughlin, he turned red first.
Just because it's your birthday...
No, no, no.
Let me speak, and I will let you speak about that.
Well, Ben, who's second?
Basically, I agree with what her proposal is. I think it's consistent with the question we've raised in recent months about how some fire departments are really struggling, not only in funding, but in their manpower. So, and we've seen the disparity, depending on what the value that is taxable in the various fire districts, depends on how much money some of these departments are getting. I know we have a policy about $25,000 to help with the purchase of a fire truck, but those fire trucks, some of them are half a million or more, you know, now. So I think it is a timely proposal that she's making, and I support, because you know, I've stated before that I do support the fire departments and helping them out, especially in our communities where they're struggling to pay the bills. Thank you.
Mr. Nunnely?
Mr. McGlaughlin, you skipped over.
It's, it cues who does it first, and that's how you have to go. You can't cut somebody else off and run without the...
Got it.
...system, sorry.
Okay. Well, that's fine. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Brown, for your thoughtful comments and putting this together. I think it is a valid discussion. I think it's something that we should take seriously and be very measured in our approach. And I think it raises a lot of good points. I would like, and I apologize, Mr. Chair, my comments may be somewhat lengthy because I have some questions, and I'd like to just address some, some things that I see in the buildup here. But I would like, if the manager would not mind, if, if you could potentially outline our current organizational structure as it relates to receiving requests from the county, how first responders currently are funded for their stated needs within each district.
Sure. So EMS is an entity within itself that is funded by an EMS tax. Its capital needs are funded within its tax and the fund balance that results from the unspent funds from that tax. Most of your EMS capital needs are owned and provided for by the county in terms of your ambulance fleet, structures, and other capital needs. For fire service, we're currently structured where each fire service district throughout the county, rural fire service district, has a fire tax that is recommended by a three-person fire commission district. That tax is presented to the Board of Commissioners at budget time as a recommendation, and you include that tax within your budget. The county levies and collects that tax and passes it through for the benefit of rural fire. If there are, currently, if there are other needs, capital needs of a fire department, we do have a policy that's included in your materials that provides $25,000 for a fire truck on a periodic basis to different squads. And then other needs are currently communicated through emergency management. I'll give you an example of one would be volunteerism. So we heard a concern that there was a problem with volunteer rosters through emergency management. Emergency management worked with the Public Information Office. We did a very robust campaign to recruit and attract volunteer firefighters. It was a very successful campaign, and that was answered. Until then, other than that example, I can't think of one where a fire department has made a capital or other request to the board, but it would have to come either directly to the board or through emergency management. And I'll stop there if that answers your question.
Well, it does, so it would be passed through in a direct contact from that fire district to someone on staff...
Correct.
...to take it in and then analyze it based on, you know, based on our budgetary, our budgets, and, and, and I guess, breaking it out into that district, what the tax needs are for that particular district to meet the needs.
Correct.
With regards to, so, and we have currently pending a fire study. Could you outline a little bit about what, what that is and what, what the timeline is for that?
Yes. So that's actually your item three under items for decision this evening. Based on prior board direction, this board asked us to expedite the selection and scope of work for a feasibility study. That scope of work being to encompass data collection, data analysis relative to the fire service, and to provide recommendations on the current state of delivery assets and resources, and how the county can best assist and support our volunteer, rural volunteer fire service. You'll hear later during items for decision that a company called NC Fire Chief Consulting is the exclusive provider through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. They have a negotiated rate through the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and they have done similar feasibility studies throughout North Carolina, who, and counties that are facing similar issues to us. And so you'll hear a recommendation later in the agenda for the county to enter into a contract with NC Fire Chief Consulting for a feasibility study at a price not to exceed $125,000 at $185 negotiated hourly rate. And the timeline for that study would be within six months, approximately six months. That timeline is really determined based on the level of cooperation in the data collection from the fire departments themselves, and then we would intend to receive a report by the end of the year for the board's consumption and digestion prior to next year's budget.
Okay. So, and, and I, so based on what I'm hearing, and, and, and I like the import of what Commissioner Brown's resolution states, and I guess that, what the intent is behind it. My concern is that whenever we're talking about process and establishment of boards, that I feel like if our study is going to make recommendations about delivery, that those are some of the things that, our structure is going to be one of those things that we're going to need to consider. And, and so while I really like the idea here, I, I almost would rather consider it and have this, not to say that this discussion is invalid now, but I would rather have this discussion after receiving the report, given that it's only six, only six months out. And I haven't heard, even though I've heard a lot of concerns from fire and the need, I haven't gotten the sense that we're in dire straits, and if we are in dire straits, that we have not, that your team, and correct me if I'm wrong, but your team is capable to plug the gaps if necessary by coming back to our board. So there's not like a, I guess to use Commissioner Brown's words, we're not responding, we don't, we're not in a situation where we're not able to respond. So I guess that's, those are my thoughts. I, I like where this is going, and I like the import of it, but I'm, I feel like maybe the devil that needs to be in the details here is maybe a little too soon for me to sign on to, and I'll just be specific for the benefit of, for the discussion, the things that I would want to receive feedback for before fully getting behind would be item two, the creation of the committee, what the makeup would be, who would sit on it, how we, how would, how that would look. As we know, it's difficult to find not only qualified and competent, but also eligible members to serve on these types of committees, and so that would be a concern and like to see in the feasibility study. I'd like to consider what the, I think a transparent process is important, but what type of process, what type of process gives us what we need based on what our current delivery methods are? Is our current process faulty? And I think that a report would, would, would show us if it is faulty. And then the creation of the reserve fund, again, I would just want to consider how that looks, and Commissioner Brown raised it, that it may, may look, you know, not that much different, just reallocation, but it is something that I feel like, again, that the study would help crystallize a little bit about what our direction would be there so that it's, we're not making critical missteps along the way. But, you know, that, that being said, I mean, I think I'm generally in support, but I, for me, it's just a bit too early on those, those particular items.
One of my concerns would be finding a truly non-biased committee. Sometimes I think it's easy for the decisions to be politicized, and I would just want to ensure that when the committee was formed, that they would truly be made up of individuals that would be non-biased to all the needs. I've had some past conversations with a few guys on a few different fire departments, and they're not hugely a fan of like a grant application-type process. That is a concern to them, and I guess one reason being having somebody non-biased to determine who, you know, would receive what money in what year. receive what money in what year. Personally, um, although I welcome the discussion, and I'm glad Commissioner Brown has brought this topic up, um, it does seem to be discussed, but I would feel more comfortable waiting for the results of the feasibility study and also, um, sitting down and talking with the different fire departments to ensure that whatever plan we have in place moving forward that everybody is comfortable with. Um, that was one conversation I had, um, a couple of weekends ago. At a chicken cook-off at, um, Gardner View, I talked with several different people from several different fire departments, and I told them that once the feasibility study was returned to us, that I would want to sit down and talk with them and find out, were they comfortable with all the findings and the results of that study? Do they want to move forward with that? Did they like all of it? Do they like none of it? Do they like parts of it and not parts of the other? So I would want to be sure that all parties that will be affected, um, feel comfortable with whatever our plan is moving forward. So, um, like Commissioner Nunley said, I would feel more comfortable making a final decision on a resolution or anything after we get the results of that study back and after we have some conversation with our fire departments.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Brown for a well-thought-out, uh, discussion. I think she did an excellent job in, 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 in bringing this forth through the committee. My concern, and I think she addressed that concern, was to make sure that we have a member of the commissioner, uh, board represented on that committee. Uh, and, and I think you mentioned that in your, in your discussion. So, uh, I, I firmly believe that, uh, we, we, we should have had something like this established a long time ago. So I want to, again, personally commend you for a job well done. Thank you, Ms.
Dito. Everything said, I'd like to see the study and this document side by side. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Brown?
I just, I'll, I'll keep this very brief. I just want to say thank you so much so far for the comments that we've heard. I just want to clarify, as I've heard several times about our strategic plan that we are getting ready to move forward with. I basically look at this as a strategic plan for when we actually have those facts in our hands. Are we going to start then, or are we, when everyone is aware of what the needs are? Um, and then we're making almost a high-pressure decision? Or are we going to start now, just the ball rolling as far as defining that scope? Not necessarily the details, I understand, because all valid questions today, making sure that we have fair representation. I mean, absolutely all fair questions. I'm just simply bringing this up to start that, those discussions, start that strategic plan in order to accurately support and quite honestly, protect the board. Uh, we've made this decision, and I just know from more of a business perspective, you got to have that plan before you can actually sell it, or, you know, so I'm thinking in, in those terms. Um, so it's, it's really just starting that plan. I just wanted to really define that and be clear about that. So, but thank you so much so far for the comments.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would like to hear Janice's opinion on, is this something, um, I mean, and I, I definitely like what Commissioner Brown has put forth, but with the study upcoming, and that's not a, a long study, I guess six months is, is not that long. What, what is your opinion? Because I respect your opinion. And we also have Chief Moore
Yeah.
in the audience. I'm going to put him on the spot because I think he's the president of the Firemen's Association. I would, I'd like to hear his comments as well.
That was coming after y'all had a chance to speak.
Great minds think alike.
You can believe that, brother.
You couldn't have him go first if you'd like.
Chief Moore, if you'll please come up here and give us your thoughts, since you're the president of the Fire Association here in Pitt County.
I have a lot of thoughts.
Well, do like everybody else talk long as you want to.
Well, I, I will say I, I do like the idea. Um, a little bit concerned about the timing with the, the master plan, strategic plan, because this is something we've been trying to do for about three years now. The issue is the association is not very well-funded. We've got about $10,000 in the bank, and I think that's the same $10,000 we've had forever. So that's where we need support from y'all. Couple of things. The fire service in Pitt County is in a very good position response-wise. But don't misunderstand that. We're all struggling. The large departments, the small departments, every single one of us are struggling. There is no other service, club, or anything else that asks people to volunteer their time at the level that we do. We, we catch a lot of volunteers, and the majority of them are on about a three-year arc. When they graduate from high school, college, get married, have kids, you know, get, get their job, whatever, we lose them at each of those steps. A lot of the issues we have are going to require money, no doubt about it, and it is expensive. I think someone said that the, the current engines are about half a million dollars. That's, that's a little low. Those, those are dated numbers. We bought an engine in two, 2019 for $535,000, same truck, now it's a million. So it, it is an expensive business to be in. We've also got issues that we have to work through, once we identify what they actually are, that aren't necessarily funding issues. We, we got some things we've got to work on ourselves. So I, I do like the idea. Uh, I would like to hear more about the nuts and bolts and how it's set up, and if we can kind of coincide that with the master plan. So those are a few of my thoughts. I'd be glad to sit down with anybody if you've got questions. Uh, I think most of you know how to get up with me. Give me a call, shoot me an email.
I've got questions. I already know the answer, and it's a little off-topic here, but when the town wore them up here in the truck, did we ask the county for any money?
No, sir.
When we bought a lacquer truck, did we ask the county for any money?
No, sir.
We moved that fire department, did we ask the county for any money?
No, sir. But we will take it next time.
I want you to get in line next time if we start running it out.
Right. And, and that's, that's where we've got to have a plan because the county's got deep pockets, I understand. I pay that tax too. You can't afford to go out and buy every fire truck and build every fire station that we need right now. There's no way. If, if, if you think you can, then we need to go right around. But I do think the county has got some expertise on financing and debt service and things like that that do help manage those things. Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Now, I think, uh, it's on to you. You had a question for her, I believe?
Yeah, I just wanted her opinion.
Right, so I will couch any opinion like I always will to say, in my role as county manager, my role is to implement the directives and policy of this board. Um, and so, um, it is easy, um, for me to do that and have an opinion when the board has full concurrence. Um, and when the board doesn't have full concurrence, especially when we're not in a, a, a nine-member board situation this evening, and potentially, um, some varying thoughts, my role is not, um, to sway a poly, decision, policy decision of a board member one way or the other. I will share, though, um, that, um, in my role as implementing and executing the policy of the board, I think that it will take some degree of, um, continued discussion, um, by this board or by a committee that might be appointed to determine, um, the scope of eligible applicants, um, the scope of eligible projects, um, the recurring funding source, because, um, an annual recurring fund as proposed ought to come from recurring dollars rather than one-time funds. And so it is, um, so that piece could require, um, um, some additional discernment, and to the extent this board says you are ready to move forward this evening, um, we will work our darndest with staff to bring back, um, an implementation plan, um, that can satisfy the policy directive of this board. And if this board says we would like to, um, wait until the feasibility study, we can certainly stand ready, um, to wait for that feasibility study and then come back with implementing directives of the board. I want to respect my role in, um, not being your 10th commissioner and having an opinion on, on a policy topic, um, but stand ready to implement what the majority of this board directs.
You didn't ask my opinion, but I'll give it to you if you want.
I already knew your opinion.
Okay, well, then we can go on then. Is there any more discussion? Not seeing none, we'll move on to items for decision. Ms. Jennifer Lanier-Coward, you're up.
Good evening. Chairman Holloman, Commissioners, County Manager Gallagher. With the near completion of the two community centers, cultural arts and recreation staff have developed the attached indoor facility ordinance to establish rules and reservation procedures for space rental. The proposed ordinance closely mimics the cultural arts and recreation outdoor facility ordinance approved by the Board of Commissioners. In addition, associated rental fees are recommended for adoption. We make the recommend, the recommendation to adopt the cultural arts and recreation indoor facility ordinance, associated fees, fee schedule for rental spaces, and recreation-based services, and update the manual of fees to reflect the new fees.
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Excellent report.
All right, thank you so much, ma'am. It passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell Hill, you're back with us.
Hello, getting bored. Um, tonight I come before you, um, on a request, a letter that I received on January 31st, uh, from Mr. Atkinson, manager and partner of the Hilton Gardens. He submitted a request of relief under his 2024 tax bill, um, for 423 Evans Street, the Hilton Gardens Hotel, parcel number 51695. Um, in his letter, he stated, his stated defense for good, was good cause due to the bill not being mailed to the right, right, uh, property mailing address. Tax bills went past due on January 7th, I believe it was, and so by that time, the bill had gone past due, the collection office had contacted, I believe, his lender to try to get that bill paid. In February, Manager Gallagher, Gallagher and Deputy, uh, Manager Kroom met with Mr. Atkinson to make sure that we fully understood that full request, to make sure that we grabbed all the information so we can make a proper, proper recommendation to the board. After reviewing, um, after that meeting and reviewing the submitted information that they gave to us and the general statutes, um, that's applicable to releasing or refunding a tax, it is my recommendation, uh, that the board deny the request. The two statutes that I re, I reviewed, um, there was two in particular in the Machinery Act, 105380 is the first one. It says that, um, it prohibits the governing board or anyone from releasing, refunding, or compromises any taxes or any portion of those taxes, um, that are due. It also says that if anyone does that, they could be personally, personally held liable, um, if they happen to do that. And I also reviewed General Statute 105380, which governs, and it says unless it is specifically allowed in the statute. The second part of that is the allowed releases, um, that's found in 105381. That talks about the three reasons that you can release a tax. It's imposed through a clerical error, and that is been defined through the court system that's transposing a number. The second one is an illegal tax on a legal purpose. Um, those have been defined as the taxing body, um, rely, they lacked authority to impose that tax. That property is in the city limits of Greenville, it's also in the county's jurisdiction. Um, the tax is unconstitutional, which it's not, and then the property is exempt from taxation, which it doesn't have any type of exemption. And so based off of all that, taking all that into account, it's my recommendation that the board deny their request. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Just that, certainly this is a new business, and, and we'd love to be able to help them out. If I understand this correctly, the law doesn't allow us to do that.
That's correct.
So I would make a motion if we, if his recommendation.
Second.
Commissioner Nunley, did you, oh, right, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. If you have Commissioner McGlaughorn, if you please vote, Commissioner McGlaughorn. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Mr. Randy, you ended up the night.
And I sort of stole his thunder in an earlier response.
Yeah, that wasn't his, that wasn't your fault.
Oh, well, just add to everybody's amusement, um, Commissioner McGlaughorn, happy birthday. Mine's tomorrow. Anyway, good evening.
Happy early birthday.
Thanks, sir. Chairman Holloman, Commissioners and Manager Gallagher. Uh, the manager did a really good job talking about the fire, uh, service study that we're, we're hoping to move forward on, but on March 24th, in your meeting, you did instruct the, the manager and staff to move forward, find an appropriate consulting group to do that, uh, and that's what we've been up to, uh, to look, uh, doing. Uh, so we immediately started looking for that. Went through and looked at several different companies that provide this service, uh, but I, we, um, felt it was very important that we select someone that understood North Carolina, understood the volunteer fire service. So that's what I kind of honed in on and, uh, ran across the North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting Group, uh, and their association with the North Carolina County Commissioners Association, really just excited me even more once I started talking, uh, to this group. Uh, they have performed 20 different county surveys in North Carolina since they began this service in North Carolina. They're all North Carolina firemen, either retired or still working, uh, as a career firefighter, but they all know North Carolina, and that's what just excited me the most about this and their association, uh, with the County Commissioner Association. Uh, all their fees are negotiated through that association, uh, and so that's already done for us. And so I'm asking for, for the, uh, for y'all to pass a motion to authorize the county manager to execute a contract with the North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting Group to perform a comprehensive fire service study and a long-range plan in the amount not to exceed $125,000.
Commissioner Watt?
I just wanted to, uh, thank Mr. Gentry for his hard work getting this ready and for choosing someone with experience with the fire departments. I think that's great, and I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion, Mr. Manager. Anything to add?
Second.
You got a second? Please vote. Just in time. All right, motion passes. All right, now with our new system here, if you want, when we get to Commissioner's comments, if you want to talk, please hit your microphone button. Not seeing any. Hit it, Sust.
I was going to say, let's go home.
Motion to adjourn. You got a motion? Do we have a second? Please vote. He voted no. Hit him with his gavel. Motion carries. We adjourn.